Test, test. Can anybody hear me?
(pause)
Test, test. Can anybody hear me?
Yes, John, you can be heard.
Thank you. I'm mute now.
(noise)
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 Lyndon, I'm still with you and has the meeting started yet?
Welcome to the, enter your ID, followed by pound. Enter your participant ID, followed by pound, otherwise
Am I ready? The Commissioners Tammy McCaskill, Will Jones, Rufus Borum, and Justin Campbell. You're hereby notified that a special It's a different one, special call meeting. Got a different call. We don't have a call for this meeting.
What'd you like?
Go ahead and read it. I don't have it.
To the members, you are hereby notified that a special called meeting of the Black To the members, you are hereby notified that a special called meeting of the Palaca City Commission has been called to be held on Wednesday, April the 7th, 2021 at Palaca City Hall 201 North Second Street, Palaca, Florida 32177. The meeting is open to the public. The meeting is called to commence at 6 o'clock PM. Please govern yourselves accordingly.
All right. Now that we've called the meeting to order, we now have the Pledge of Allegiance. We have our Pledge of Allegiance at this time by Mr. Jonathan Griffith, and we will have our invocation by Pastor Lonzo Mulberry Chaplain.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you once again for allowing us to come together. We thank you for this opportunity to be in your presence. We thank you because you've been good all day long. God, we look to you tonight for directions, for guidance, for instructions. Help us to do the things that are needful for the city. Those things will be pleasing in your sight, and we forever praise you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Terrell Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones. Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
All present and accounted for.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Next up on the agenda is public comment. Public comments limited to three minutes. No act will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment, please dial 386-3290-100, extension zero, 386-3290-100, extension zero. Or you can use the YouTube chat function. For those who are in the audience, please fill out a yellow speaker's card that's next to the guy with the charcoal blazer. So when you come to the podium, give your name and address for the record, or as you're speaking on either one of our IT functions. At this time, we're going to open the floor for public comment. General public comment is not open. Is there anything in the YouTube chat?
Not at this time, there.
Seeing nothing in the YouTube chat. We'll close public comment. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have one item. Adopt Resolution Number 2021 R 33, authorize acceptance and execution of an agreement for FAA coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations act. The grant funding for the K Larkin Airport in the amount of $23,000. Do you wish to have this item removed for discussion? Do we wish to have discussion on this item? Or at this time, I'll entertain a motion unless we need further information. Motion to approve that the second my Commissioner Campbell is ready for further discussion.
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number four of the agenda, adopt resolution 2021 R 34, granting special events permits for Memorial Day Parade, American Legion, Bert Harts Post 45 is the applicant. At this time, Mr. Cutright, are you coming forward to give the presentation or give a summation of the event, and then we will hear from the applicant if necessary?
Thank you, Commissioner Mayor. We talked to you here just to get a clarity on the parades that we have in the city of Palaca. The American Legion's post, make sure I get that right, 45, put an application in March 1st, asking for permission to have this. They did provide us with a decent COVID plan. Also asking for permission to use the police, city police, to have some of the streets blocked off for this event. The event has been going on for a while, but last year because of COVID, it was canceled. And now we're just seeking permission to open things back up.
Okay. Do we have a representative from Post 45 who will come forward to this time? Commander, you want to come forward?
My name's Ken Moore, Post Commander, Bert Harts Post 45. We have a plan that we're trying to, we want to put an ax in place to have the parade. We're wanting to have people along the parade route encouraging social distancing, to put a sign along the way to encourage social distancing. We want to talk to those who are going to participate in the pay, pray to either wear a mask or do social distancing. We want to cooperate in any way we can, but we'd like to have this permission to go ahead with the parade.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the Commissioner? Any concerns? I'll give my concern, since everybody's, since there are no others at this time. My only thing is, so I guess the biggest thing I've never, I guess one of the things I've never seen is a socially distanced parade. And we've had other events with large number of people gathering in one place. I've got a bit of angst as it relates to parades, being able to control gatherings in the same way along a parade route for several blocks. But what I will say, if this is, if this is an event that the Commission is considering passing, I would just say mandate, one of the things that I would ask is that there not be the option of the social distancing aspect without masking, that there be mandatory masking at this event, no different than what we've seen at some other events throughout where anyone coming to the event is required to wear a mask, and also those participating in the event are required to wear a mask, so that we can maybe eliminate some of the other caveats that we have, just because we don't know how many people will show, how you can control the event, or what other things were in place. And I don't necessarily see an elaborate plan for social distancing as it relates to this. I think the depiction may have been proper. And so that's one of the concerns that I have is just masking. Is there any opposition to requiring everyone who comes as, you know, to view, or even those who participate to wear a mask, to wear a mask? So for those who couldn't hear, he was just saying that they didn't have any opposition to requiring the participants to have to wear a mask during the, during the time of the parade. Any questions, concerns, or thoughts on that, on my comments from the Commission?
Well, I would like to just add, in terms of, you know, along the parade route, I would say maybe just put some, put some X's down or whatever, or some spot six, six feet apart. I think that would probably add a little bit more clarity to where people should stand. And for people who are together, I mean, in terms of friends, family who's together, they can stay in those, those areas similar to like the, the bass tournament that they have. So if we can do something along those lines, along with, I don't know, I know we had implemented something where they had a spiel to where, you know, continue to, you know, stay socially distanced, those type things. I think, you know, we could possibly do something along those lines, but I'll give the floor to the rest of the Commission.
And I just don't want to repeat, you know, what you basically keep elaborating on what you all said, but just clarification on more crowd control. You're asking that. Soap markers are being placed.
Yeah.
Definitely, definitely if everyone participating in the parade has masks and those that are coming, we encourage that everyone wear masks. And kind of us repeating, I like some gentle reminders about, please make sure you social distance and mask up.
And they, you know, they have an individual who kind of like, well, I do know, and I think they had a event down in Central Florida where they constantly had people, you know, reminding people to make sure you put your mask, wear your mask. Otherwise, you know, there's no penalty that can be, but you can maybe ask them to leave the area if, well, I don't think we can control that much. But you see if they can comply in any way possible to help for everybody who participate and stay as safe as possible.
And I agree with that, but my question would be, and I think that's good, and I know we can't impose any penalties on it, but it helped with the reminders, but the work that it will entail for them to go down and put those markers down, you know, like you're saying, the six feet markers and having staff to go out and do that, just it's been about the time.
I'd just say, I'd just say tape. I mean, just a little bit of tape, you know, just put a, you know.
I wouldn't put on us on staff to do it. There's going to be something for the participants to do. I think the other thing is, I think with the sentiment, you also got to understand, you're talking about a parade that's going to cover a significant number of blocks.
Yeah.
And the six foot distancing, it's going to be difficult to do in that way. I think what you can do, which may cover the same spirit of what I think both of you are talking about, is to encourage them to have signage on every block which says, you know, continue to social distance or whatever. Again, I just don't see how you can have a socially distanced parade. That's why I think masking is going to be more critical than anything else in those situations. You know, if we were further along with vaccinating and other things and the numbers were up, then, you know, then some of the risks are lower, but I think overall, you just have to encourage the signage and encourage the applicants to have people to say, hey, you gotta pull your mask up, you know, do whatever to really enforce what the city is requiring. Yes, sir. Come, come, come forward.
They did say, I talked to Mr. Moore earlier today, and he did say they would, the volunteer to have people stage through the parade route, encouraging people to continue to use social distance and wear your mask. So they did have that place, and also they would put signs along that two and a half mile route for the parade to be on, about the social distance and also.
Two and a half mile?
I'm just, the parade route. This is the first parade from here here, so.
It won't be two miles.
What a parade route. North Carolina, we have two and a half miles. Parade route that they have in Palaca. I'm sorry, a little bit, little bit more territory in North Carolina than in Palaca. But yes, he did say they would have signs staged along that route to continue to tell people to practice social distance and wear your mask. And they'll have people staged in areas to, to kind of help police that as much as they can.
That makes me feel better because I know just historically speaking of the parade, it's heavily populated around the ninth street, anywhere from where the parade starts up into Ameris Bank, and then it kind of fickle's out and spacing isn't really not an issue. But if we would be able to have people, especially within those crowded areas or the general areas that we have known to be crowded, that will give me a little bit more peace with making a decision as well along that route. Again, having those signs and having those additional people, volunteers or whomever it may be along those crowded areas to help with that crowd control and the mask control.
What about, I guess, it's just a question. What about folks who traditionally throw candy and things of that nature?
That was one of my next concerns.
Well, they're recommended there will be no food and candy provided at the parade from the coordinator's position. Parking stores, stores around are unable to do that. We can't control that, but the coordinator itself is not doing no food or candy.
And can we make sure that that's something, and if this is approved, that is put out on any advertisement so that there won't be any, you know, I think that'll also help with the crowd control as well, because a lot of time the people flock down for the candy. So if we can make sure that there will be no candy thrown, it's provided in the literature, I think that'll be great as well.
Any other questions, concerns?
Just a thing, just because this is basically a pilot. I think this, this is a pilot, and it will kind of help determine if we can do future events based on how this turns out. And so we certainly would like for, if it's approved, you know, if it's approved, that, you know, that this be the pilot for going forward, how we can do or think about parades going forward.
Commander?
Yeah, we agree. If we can't social distance, we need to have the masks. And we also have in place a plan that we will have masks present and available to go circulate to the crowd to hand them out. Those who don't have one, we want to encourage it. Everyone that participates in the parade will be required to sign an agreement to wear a mask and or social distance either way, but, and no candy or food along the route will not be handed out. We have the Military Officers Association aboard, some Marines on board, if W's on board, support this. So we have all these organizations. We had our first meeting today to just kind of start, see where we go from here, but we want to work with this to keep this down too, and we are determined with the volunteers and other organizations helping us, we can make this work. Yes, sir.
Commander, I just have one question. Historically, what are the numbers? What's the size of the crowd historically?
I think the biggest crowd we had altogether, we made a count, the last big one we had was like 400 altogether. Now, not everybody's on the parade route. Some people were already mingling down by the riverfront, hanging out down there because of, you know, music or something, but about 400. It's never a large crowd. Most of them show up at other places for a free lunch or whatever, but it's about three to 400 on every year.
I think, I think you're cheating yourself. Your parades are pretty popular. It's not the biggest in town, but you get a decent crowd.
Probably going, having a parade, it's going to be, maybe a few more, the numbers are going to be a bit more higher.
It'll look like Christmas.
Yeah.
Any other comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, if I could, the conditions that I have written down that I've heard discussed for clarity's sake of which the minutes and what cut right were that the sponsors of the parade would have people participate, who are participating in the parade, sign an agreement to either wear a mask or social distance. That was A.
Mr. Holmes, I've been told your microphone's not on.
I am so happy that we're doing this by Zoom with microphones. The conditions that I understand, the board has discussed, the Commission has discussed are as follows. One, that the sponsor would agree to have people who are participating in the parade sign a, an agreement to wear masks or social distance. That was B. I mean, A, B would be that the sponsors would have people positioned along the parade route who would be encouraging those who were spectators to social distance and/or wear a mask. C.
And not or? And not or?
Social distance and wear a mask? Okay. All right. And that would be the same thing as to A, you want people participating to agree to wear a mask and social distance?
If possible.
C, you would like the advertisement, any advertisements that are noticing or publicizing the parade to contain a notice that no candy or food will be distributed by the parade participants?
Yes, sir.
And D, extra masks would be made available by the sponsors for spectators at no charge. Those are the four that I had.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Yeah, I just want to maybe add one or two other things where possibly have hand sanitizer provided. I mean, if you have hand sanitizer, maybe at the blocks, at each block area, wherever you may be, and also, I don't know, this might be stretching, but you only say you had 400, so a temperature check, temperature check. 400, you only have 400.
Outside, everybody's going to be hot. It's going to be me. Every temperature is going to be, every temperature is going to be one on one.
That's why I added it last.
Because they're already walking two, they're walking two and a half miles.
Okay, so.
Just, just strike, strike the temperature check. Strike that, strike it. But just make sure, you know, with the last item that I had.
So even though there's no food being distributed, you want hand sanitizer? So even though there's no food being distributed, you want hand sanitizer stations at each block intersection?
We want to have, I mean, I mean, it's just down St. John's, right? Maybe? No?
What is the parade route? I'm sorry, the beginning and end of the parade is where?
Okay.
And although they may not be throwing out food, they may be bringing food and sharing food and different things like that. So if we can take a shot at having the hand sanitizer stations, that would be good. I, I mean, any safety measure we can implement is, is worth the try.
Hand sanitizer station then at each cross street.
Like a block.
From eleventh street to the river.
Yeah.
So how about a couple of stations? How about a couple of sanitizer stations along the route?
Or three, I mean, just block.
Because at the end of the day, you're going to have, you're, most people are not going to be having exchanges like that. But if you have a couple of stations along the route, I think you'll be fine.
Just, just add a couple of stations, whatever, at least it'd be available. So, yeah, they don't, yeah, just put two.
At least two.
Yeah.
Two or more.
Yeah.
Minimum of two, right?
That covers, that covers commissioners, that covers commissioners' concerns. They'll be used, definitely. They'll be used.
All right, so two or more hand sanitizer stations positioned along the route.
Yeah.
Have that sunny?
Anything else? Not an entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve based on the conditions that we as the commission put forth and concerns and accept this event.
Second.
Motion for a second, is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Never thought I would pass. A motion for socially distanced parade, but the veterans has got it. So we, you are definitely the test for this. And again, and again, gentlemen, thank you for your service and for your commitment to this community. Commander, you worked us over. Mr. Cutright may be a little biased as well as a veteran. Next up, adopt resolution twenty twenty-one R thirty-five, grant a special events permit for Wilson's Children's Hospital Bass Tournament, May thirteenth through May fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Come on, you can come up, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Paul Hamilton with Wilson Children's Bass Tournament. We had our committee members go to the, to the BASS tournament to view how and what they did. And a lot of ours is modeled behind them, some changes that we've made this year that we were doing in the past, you know, the big tent that we had with all the chairs under it. We've done away with the big tent. We'll still have chairs, but they'll be socially distanced, stretched out throughout the lawn. We'll have multiple hand wash stations, more than we've had before, and multiple sanity, hand sanitizer stations. We're having the carpenter shop build partitions like this right now for the, that you have here for the registration table and the weigh-in table. Signs, multiple signs all over saying, you know, face mask and social distancing. Yeah, one thing you have to think about, this is a healthcare facility that's putting on this tournament, so. All of our, I'd say ninety percent of our volunteers work there at the hospital. The fishermen, they're used to this already. We, there's, the committee follows a lot of these fishermen in different tournaments to go see how and what they're doing. So that most of the guys have a, a good idea of what they're supposed to be doing at these tournaments and not doing, so. We're glad to come back this year. You know, we didn't have it last year, so. Another thing, two other things that we're doing to help reduce the crowd, we're not doing the boat drawing at the tournament, which is a large crowd draw that will be done online the following weekend. And we're not giving away door prizes at this tournament, so, and that's being put out there on our website so that it reduces the crowd also. But we still want to have the tournament, and we still want to, you know, collect funds for the hospital. I mean, it's a, it's a big deal for the children's hospital.
What's your pre-registration right now on your fisherman?
Usually it's slow, we're probably a hundred and ten, but we're running the same as we always do. The day of the tournament, oh my gosh, we'll have two, three hundred sign up the morning of the tournament.
Usually run about five hundred?
About forty-five is our average, yes.
And I, I think Wilson's is the largest, it's the largest fishing tournament in this region.
Largest single day tournament in the United States of America.
Right. And so we definitely appreciate you coming to Palaca, choosing Palaca as your site annually. So within each boat, is there a, is there a marshal in, in each, on each of these boats?
Actually, actually it's teams, it's, you know, the, the gentleman and his partner. They don't have marshals in the boats like they do for BASS. Whenever they come to weigh in, only one fisherman's allowed to come and be up on stage. They can't come as a pair. That's one of the rules we enacted this year to help with the social distancing, but even though they've been together in a boat all day, we don't want both of them coming up on stage together because there'll be other people on stage, so. It's a, it's a big deal for us. We make a lot of money for the hospital for that.
Let me just make sure, this was listed as a class B, correct? You listed this as a class B? It's class A? So just wanted to make sure.
So.
That, that speech is blurred a little bit. They, they list their maximum attendance at a thousand. And the cutoff for class B is a thousand.
Right.
But when you add the hundred and twenty-five volunteers that they've listed, I mean, I don't know if that's supposed to be included in the attendance figure or not, or, or.
That hundred and twenty-five will stretch over to three days, the day of the big tournament, Saturday. We usually have, we have three different shifts of people that come in and, and help, and that day we'll have about seventy-five volunteers, but that's three different shifts.
I think for the, I think for the purposes of interdistinction, this is a class A tournament. And by far the largest tournament that we do in Palaca, kind of the grandfather of all tournaments here, even though Bass Master League may get the notoriety in some forms, this tournament gets just as much notoriety and, and probably three times the participation. And so, yes, sir.
One food vendor.
And is that in the nature of a food truck or?
Yes, sir, it's Mr. Stolpe. He's, he's done a couple of tournaments already this year here.
And the chairs, will there be seating accommodations for those who buy the food? Eating areas?
Well, they can spread out, you know, and sit in the chairs, but not a designed eating area. We won't have, you know, seats or picnic tables for those people to congregate needs.
And, and one of the things we required previously was that there'd be markings at the vendor stations so that people can properly socially distance on the, on the ground.
Okay.
I think Stolpe's is one of the ones that typically comes in the van. He, he. That's who you have coming in?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so Jerry, yeah, Jerry's group is, they're very familiar with the requirements. Also, the seating areas, if you're going to have seats out, are you going to have seats out during the, the weigh-ins?
Yes, we will. That's where we normally have that large tent with all the seats in one area. But now what we're doing, we're taking those seats and spreading.
Spread them out over the six feet, which is what, just you just employed the standards that we had from Bass for, and that were adopted by the commission.
One question, and I've actually volunteered at this tournament before in, in, in transport of fishermen. So you're going to have carts and a bus transportation to take the fishermen from the parking areas to the.
I would assume as much because the chamber's helping us out with that. Ms. Julie always handles that, yes.
Right, so I mean, I don't know how far the commission wants to go.
The safeguards, the masking?
Yeah, I guess you have the volunteers that wear masks.
Oh, yes, volunteers will be wearing masks.
So mandate extra masking during transport as well? Right, the carts. Any concerns from the commission? This is probably our most familiar area with events. Any other comments or concerns? Any, any other requests that we need to put inside of the activities on?
We're actually building individual stations to send them all over the place.
So the list that I have is there'd be no tent provided outside or erected outside?
Wait, wait, hold on. There will be tents, the, the people that do all the, the ladies that sit at the tables that calculate all the waiting, weigh-ins, and on the registration side where they collect registration, there will be tents there. But they will not be tents for gathering for spectators.
Okay, so no spectator tent?
There you go.
Okay. Chairs will be provided, but will be at social distances. You will have multiple hand wash and hand sanitization stations or hand sanitizer stations. You'll have signs which encourage face masks and social distancing. You'll have no boat drawing at the tournament. You have no door prizes being awarded at the tournament. You'll have one fisherman on stage from each team for the weigh-in. You'll have one food vendor. You will have social distance markings at the food vendor's location, and all volunteers will wear face masks.
And Mr. Cutright, all those things are enumerated in that COVID regulation that we set forth in, for fishing, and you can just put, they are to adopt the city's COVID regulations for fishing tournaments that may not be listed, and any other regulations that may not be listed from the city in our fishing tournament regulations.
I, I think they have a couple here that were unique to this, so.
Right.
With no door prizes, the, you know, the one fisherman on stage at a time and so forth. But the list I read is, I think what you said you planned to do anyway, and then the commission comments, so that's.
Yeah, those are the same, same ones. That one fisherman on the stage was the same ones that, that were, that was adopted from Bass. And also Bass Master. Well, Bass Master adopted Bass's stuff as well, so. Any other comments or concerns?
The only other thing I have is, he, he's going to have all that hand sanitizer, you can leave that for post forty-five.
He said donate it afterwards. All right. Seeing no other concerns from the commission, what's the pleasure of the commission at this time?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve with, with the.
With the modifications, specification that the city manager just set forth in addition to what we already have as fishing tournament regulations that we approved.
Motion to approve with enumerated criteria. There's a second by Commissioner Campbell. Is there any further discussion? Questions call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank, thank you, sir. Good to see you again. Next up. Resolution twenty twenty-one R thirty-six, granting special events permit to Palaca Young Professionals for the Palaca Wine Mixer, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. Whoever represented it from P Y P. Mr. Bates, how are you today, sir?
Doing good. Good evening.
Yes, sir, if you want to go and give a summation?
Summation is.
Going to introduce yourself and.
Palaca Young Professionals. Summation is really a one-day event, May twenty-ninth. It would begin with the farmer's market in the boat ramp area. There would also be vendors and food distribution. And then towards the afternoon, there would be live music and a beer tent on the side. So, I mean, it's hard to, you know, we've got, when you look at the two masking stations ordering four thousand masks, setting up dining at fifty percent capacity, twenty-one restrooms, eight hand washing stations, six hand sanitizer stations, obviously requesting vendors to have hand sanitizer at all booths, spacing out vendors, and then increasing trash bins to just, you know, to decrease trash and also having that, so everything is as contactless as possible. Marking out six-foot lines for food or alcohol sales when appropriate, and then making announcements between bands, going over CDC standards, signage, verbiage, advertising ahead of time to socially distance, wear masks.
What's your anticipated attendance?
Estim, it's hard to say. I mean, estimating probably. I mean, it is Memorial Day weekend. There hasn't been events, so it could be ten to fifteen thousand people.
Ooh, that ain't a number I want to hear. Over the week, over the whole period or that?
One day.
It's one day, but.
I, I, I mean, that's, I mean, that's the hard part because, I mean, that's the unknown, because again, there hasn't been any other events. You know, and it is Memorial Day weekend, you put a tent up, you put that. I don't know. I mean, there might be five, but is there a pent-up demand out there that people are going to see that and want to come out? It could happen.
And drink, and have, and have one?
Written summation says you're prepared for the twenty-five thousand people.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-five thousand people.
I, well, I think it's looking, it's looking at blue crab numbers and kind of dividing that out for one day.
Is, is there any way you can control the, the entry in? I, I can't, how could you socially distance that number of people unless it's spread across?
Well, it would be from basically, I mean, basically from the bridge all the way to the boat ramp, spread out that way, but it, it is hard to do. And, and as you know, that is a thing that I think we've looked at before with events. Downtown, there's so many eager ways to get in and out of there. You can't just have like one or two, you know, you couldn't have one or two, even if we had, let's say we had the greatest thermal scanner that everybody goes through. But where do you put it? And there's loopholes in it, so. You know, downtown has a lot of great things with the, 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 the size of the river, the breadth of the river, but controlling that, you know, like we try to look at concert. If you want to do a concert and sell tickets, how do you have a gate? Right? I mean, so that, that's the big challenge with that, one of the, you know, the pros and cons.
Did you say you were going to have a band?
Yes.
One band or multiple bands?
Live music would start at eleven AM and go to eleven to eleven.
And, and is that going to be at one location, like a tent?
Yes. What, a stage area?
I'm trying to picture six feet dancing with a partner and everybody's doing that.
And I mean, I would, I mean, and, 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 you know, maybe this is too soon, you know, but at least we're having the discussion. You know what I mean? You know, no one wants to, but it's, when are we ready? What does that look like? So, I mean, I think along, you know, when do we get back to that? Because, you know, Blue Crab, you know, and I learned a lot from that because that, you know, really that, that's a community event. You know, there's a lot of people that have done a lot of work and it means a lot to this community. And, you know, not to have something, obviously, last year it made sense. So we was trying to do something this year. But, I mean, it is tough because once you start having things with masks, bathrooms, all this, your costs go up. So you try, I mean, it, it, it's hard, it's hard to scale back.
And, and, and the main concern is, is the crowd control and the safety concerns, and I'm visualizing from an educator's perspective when we have over five or six hundred kids at a field day event and the manpower requires to keep kids and, you know, control their behaviors and I'm just trying to picture this, this is, that's a lot of work with only five hundred kids, so twenty-five thousand people.
Did you say you're going to have alcohol sales?
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be throughout the event?
Oh.
Is it going to be from, from eleven to eleven?
Along with the music and.
Probably along that, probably start at noon, but yes, sir, throughout. Three, that would be three different distributor, distributors. Burkhart, just to have different varieties, obviously with a wine mixer, try to push some wine sales, bottle sales along with that.
Need more rescue, you need more rescue for when people pass out.
Yeah, and, and we learned that, I think water state, water is, is a big thing to have water stations.
You know, people become less socially compliant as the.
Intoxicated they become, but less compliant they're going to be.
Wine makes.
I'm imagining that as well.
Wine makes it fine.
What did you say?
I said the wine will make it fine. So what, yes, sir, Commissioner Moore.
Well, I just have one quick comment, but I do know other cities were kind of doing some things, and I looked up the Plant City had their strawberry festival, which I'm from down that area. Um. They, I think they put up about five hundred to six hundred thousand, um, people. I know various parades, I know they had the county parade, which is only about around a fifth, third or fifth, uh, of what you're anticipating or whatever, but, um, that, that's quite a bit. And I, I, I don't know what they did down in Plant City to control that number of people at the event, but, um, it's just something to kind of at least think about. Um, the event is not until sometime later this year. Um, I would like to see what some of the, um, other events, how did they handle certain things along those line? But they did have the strawberry festival this year down in Plant City. And I do know there's a big turnout down there, so, and I, and I.
And I think that's one of the main reasons, you know, here tonight is to kind of work through that and figure out what, you know, that timing, what it looks like, look at other things. But, you know, as a community, like it's good to see those two events approved. So how do we start to have things? How do we do it safe? You know, but we still, you know, we, we still wanna have those events at some point. Um, you know, and, and because they're great events for this community. So it's, it's always, you know, it's, at least we're moving, moving, moving along.
And, and Commissioner, the reason, uh, we really can't afford to wait is because events of with, with as many features and facets as this require a lot of time for planning. So if they're gonna put something like this on, they really can't afford to wait till two weeks before the event to get approval, yes or no? And so that's why we put it on the agenda tonight because they need to know, you know, if there are gonna be restrictions, what they are, what the parameters are. Um, in order for them to make plans and book whatever they need to book in terms of food, beverages, bands and so forth. So that's why we really, that we can afford to wait another three weeks or a month, uh, for them to, if they're gonna move forward. And then so that's why it's on there tonight.
Commissioner Jones?
Well, just a suggestion, as I'm listening to the city manager. Maybe you guys think of doing something at a smaller scale and maybe include, uh, the brewery that we have here locally. And maybe stop by doing a block event versus several blocks and that you could probably control the interest ways and stuff like that. Um, and, and maybe something like that, just to start at a smaller scale, we could be okay with that. But I'm just gonna tell you, twenty, fifteen to twenty thousand people, as we all pretty much have made consensus, that is just a loo- look too much too soon.
Okay.
Personally.
No, and, and, and listen, that's, I mean, I don't want this to be a negative. I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're figuring this out.
Yeah.
You know, like, and maybe, who knows, maybe it's September, you know, Labor Day weekend, for instance, you know? Or maybe it's, maybe it's next Blue Crab, uh, uh, May a year from now. But I, you know, I think we just wanna have that engagement and get some direction.
Right, right.
To know, you know, what, what, what can be approved and what can't.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that. And then I know that you guys want us to make a decision and I, and I say.
With sponsors, I mean, at a certain point, but it's, I, I, it's not like I don't want you to guys to feel like it's a, we gotta, I mean, it's, we're at that time, we have to have it. But it's not a negative or hey, you know, but it's just, we've gotta get, start collecting, you know, deposits and everything else. So it's, it's at that point.
I would love to see it happen, but the concern is in the responsibility saying that we gotta be more responsible than we can at that scale right now. And with, you know, that's, that's my personal opinion and, uh, as a commissioner, but set the favor of the commission itself.
Commissioner McCaskill?
And out of respect, Commissioner Jones, I respect your personal opinion. And I, me personally and speaking with a few constituents, I'm ready to move forward and see these events happen. We just had a fair. Um, I, I know that we have the COVID vaccinations available to quite a few people, you know, opening up for wider, uh, age range, and I'm just ready to move forward and I would like to see this happen. And I know that we can, you know, try to make, you know, uh, determine, uh, how many people are gonna attend events or whatever, but we just, we can't knock it until we try it. I mean, we can keep kicking the can down the road and saying, you know, the safety precautions, and I understand that, but, um, me personally, I would like to see it move forward. I do have a few concerns about the, the wine and the alcohol, the times they're serving it. And like I said, um, the more intoxicated people become, they become less compliant. So that would be a concern, but I'm ready to see some normalcy enforced to have some more events, so.
Commissioner Moore?
Right, well, the only other thing I have is there, well, and I think Commissioner Jones did mention about the scale, the scale of it. Um, do you have an idea of what the amount of people per se to, uh, to attend the event, to kind of estimate, um, the funding that you all, the expenses that you pay in order to put the event on and your recouping of the, those fundings? Um, have you, um, kind of maybe estimated the cost? Cause you had it for one year.
Yeah.
And I don't know how your numbers ran, but just say for instance, if you can't, if you scaled it, uh, if you don't do twenty-five thousand and if you scaled it, you know, do you have a certain number that you can possibly make sure that you don't go in the hole and you do, um, you're able to recoup?
I think it's really not necessarily a number. It kind of comes down to the features. Because with the event, you have several different revenue streams. Obviously, one of the largest is sponsorships. Um, another large one is alcohol sales. And then you also collect money from vendors and, you know, the food vendors and also those that show up. So those are kind of your three streams. And that's what I, I mean, it, it's, it's hard. An event like this, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to scale it back because once you start bringing in, you know, the masks, you start bringing in the, the, the portable bathrooms and all these things. You know, these things, those, those bathrooms could really support between five and twenty-five. So it's, I think to do it, some of those costs don't come down. If you have a stage for a band, that'll be scaled back from what it was at Blue Crab, but there's still a fixed cost with that.
Got one speaker card. Uh, Ms. Kitchens?
Allegory Kitchens, ten twenty-seven South Twelfth Street, Palacay, Florida. I have several concerns. I'll start with the one that's personal. Loud music. I know you also spend the sound ordinance. And at previous, uh, Blue Crab festivals, they've been very, very good about keeping the sound down. And on occasion, when I did have to call PD, they, the Blue Crab turned the sound down. I'm a mile away. And by the way, from Mr. Cutright's information, ten city blocks equals one mile roughly. You, I don't need to hear boomboxing shaking my house and rattling my windows one mile from downtown Palacay, nor does anybody else. I don't think Ms. McCaskill would like it either. She lives across the street from me. So I'm very, very concerned about the noise and I would request that these folks make sure that you cannot hear the booming past the riverfront park. There's no sense in that. Uh, now that, that's the personal thing. The other thing is, I also know that when you serve alcohol, you have to have X number of policemen for every amount of, of people that attend. I think it's one, for every one thousand people, you have to have one policeman. I know that our police department has been shorthanded. They have patrol officers and supervisors, pardon me, supervisors and captains actually riding patrol. So, and then you have to have the alcohol liability insurance in addition to the property liability. I did not see anything about the police, the alcohol liability or the property liability in the agenda packet. So that's something that has to be taken into consideration. My main concern for me personally and my neighbors is the loud music. I recently had a neighbor, pardon me, someone from the hill area around the Daily News called me and complained that for the past two weeks, Vicks has been having loud parties, boop, with music rattling people's windows a mile away. That's not acceptable there and it's not acceptable here. So I would ask that these folks make sure that the music cannot be heard. There's no reason to have to hear it past the riverfront. The other thing is, since this is Memorial Day weekend and historically for the past twenty-odd years, Blue Crab Festival has been held on Memorial Day weekend. So any, anything on Memorial Day weekend is gonna make people think it's Blue Crab Festival. That is going to bring in the people. Once that goes out and even if these people don't, if Palacay Young Professionals does not advertise, it's still gonna go out on social media by the people and you're gonna have a huge crowd. The riverfront is between nine hundred and eighty-three to one thousand feet long from the, from the bridge to the boathouse. Twenty-five thousand people along there. It's gonna be really hard to distance it at six, six feet apart. Also, you need to check with the hotel to make sure they're okay with having the street closed. In times past, they have requested that Second Street not be closed because it affects their customers. So I would think you need to take all these things into consideration. And again, as Ms. McCaskill pointed out, and I think Mr. Holmes did also, when people drink, they become less inhibited. So they're gonna be, and the word mixer means mixer. I think this is simply a one-day Blue Crab Festival under the name of Wine Mixer. But please make them keep the noise down to where you can't hear it past the riverfront park. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Commissioner?
I think, um, my overall concern is, and this is a request and it may not, or it may be possible. I just know at the beer tent, just seeing previous vent, events, that's generally one of the most populated areas. Is there not a way that you would be able to have several beer tents or at least two or three other options to grabbing some of that so that a crowd is not gathering at that one specific location? Um, also, I have questions with regards to where the staging is going to be, if it's where it was with the previous, um, Blue Crab Festival or festival that was had by the young professionals. Um, I was there for a great, I mean, a great deal of that. So it was actually socially distanced even during that time. So I'm not, I'm, I find peace if it's in that area because it is open. Um, and then again, a lot of people don't like the same type of music, so that's going to also. But I do ha- I do wholeheartedly agree, um, with Commissioner McCaskill. Um, as an adult or as adults in our community, you have the option to stay home if you don't want to be in a heavily populated, um, area. Um, again, at some point, we, as a commissioner, can't necessarily take our individual feelings as the sole feelings, um, to make decisions. We have to take in consideration those who have put us in the position that we are in today. And I've had several conversations with those that want to move forward. I've had conversations with those who don't want to move forward. But at the end of the day, we as a commission have a duty to make sure that we try to make the best decision as possible. Again, if we allow other events to be, um, put into place be, and put in, pu- put into place with the precautions, I feel that we should allow, or this is my personal opinion at this time, that we should allow or work with this organization to try to make this event happen or some type of event to happen. Um, but again, I said, and I'll say it again, we are here to make some of the tough decisions. And sometimes the tough decisions are not always the best decisions, but I'm here to do what I can as an individual that was trusted by the citizens of this community to move this event forward and other events.
David Parsons, Blacky Young Professionals. It is a similar footprint to the previous Blue Crab. Uh, we did plan to turn the stage, um, to the side some so that it's kind of almost at the top of the hill, but facing all the way down Memorial. Uh, that way it would give more space for people to socially distance and space out. Um, typically, we've set up, um, at the top of the hill for the, the alcohol tent. And then we plan not to have tables and chairs, things like that. It'll be high-top tables where you could stand, not necessarily sit, so that would keep people moving on. Um, and then that way it does give, you know, the entire space. You should be able to see the stage from one end of Memorial. So that gives a little, little more space. And then like you said, we do have different, um, types of bands. So we wouldn't have fifteen to twenty-five thousand people at one time. Uh, that, that's unlikely, but it would be throughout the entire day of the festival. So it would be, you know, we have, we have a lot of the bands that we had at Blue Crab, so that would be a draw. Uh, and we didn't plan to market, uh, at least out of town especially. Um, we'll market some on social media and, and minimize the marketing so that it wasn't, you know, wouldn't draw a big crowd necessarily planning to come from other places. Um, but, you know, things get shared, it could go either way.
You won't market, you won't, you won't market out of town, but you're gonna market on social media.
So can you limit, can you limit, can you limit social media to just only within Palacay?
We won't have any paid ads. How about that?
And I know that we can't limit the, the marketing, but I just wish there was, with the concern about the noise in our neighborhood, like, you know, later in the night because, you know, of, of us old people, we tend to go to bed a little early over there, over there in our area, so.
Go get some wine.
What time? It, it ends at eleven?
We, we could look at the footprint and see if there was a, an ability to space it out. I know in the past, we've had struggles with getting volunteers and so having more area, we would need more volunteers. But we could look at, at what we could do for it.
That will give greater peace again, uh, with the, knowing that that's one of the heavily, uh, populated areas. Or even if you don't, what precautions do you have in place? That will be one, visible, to have individuals that's in that area to help enforce what is put into place. Because again, with something being so heavily populated and we have to bring it into, again, when people tend to be intoxicated, rules tend to go out the window. And again, we want to make sure that the young professionals are doing what they have to do, even in the midst of. And I know how crazy it can be on the day of, but that may have to, uh, you know, volunteer pool have to increase. But I want to know in that area, I'm not worried about the open space because people can properly socially distance. But in that small area that's confined to that tent where beer is gonna be, beer, wine, whatever, is gonna be so. I am concerned about that because even, um, I feel that if you're in those lines, it's gonna be a fifteen-minute wait at minimum. Or, so that's one of the CDC, if fifteen minutes or longer, you consider yourself to be exposed. So how can you ensure the, the people that, the patrons of that event, their safety while they're in that line trying to obtain that, um, beer or wine?
And we did go through, uh, other events and their, their, um, precautions and, and all of their procedures and everything like that. And we had, uh, a, a team that went through and, and looked, you know, modeled ours after events that have happened. Um, so we, we've seen what's out there, you know, we see what works and what doesn't. So we do have time still that we could make changes to.
One, like I said, we did look at different vendors for alcohol and did have a conversation with Champion. Um, they do the Jaguar games. They're the, I think like Michelob, they do a lot of craft beer, things like that, White Claw, seltzers.
Never heard of it.
Yeah, so, but they've got the big six-foot, um, troughs they use at the Jag game. So we could inquire about using those and scatter those around.
Anything else?
Well, I, I just wanna make sure that Commissioner Campbell's, um, point get captured and, um, and assure that, um, at least that those things in the event, this, this, uh, event is, um, approved, that those things are in place even if people have consumed alcohol. Um, w- we just wanna make sure that things are not out of hand. We're just not here to have events for the sake of having events and, and we know people are ready to come back and um, bring some normalcy back to the community. But, um, I just wanna reiterate the point that he made as it relates to that and that'll kind of help me as well.
Any other questions, concerns, Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Mayor, just to, to mention, some of the issues that were spoken of could still be addressed, uh, in the permits that would still be required, i.e., as you know, there's still be a noise variance required, which would come before the commission. Uh, and as you know, you have the ability to determine the hours during which the variance would apply. Um, you also have alcohol sales, which would have to come before the commission separately because of our ordinances. So I just wanted to mention to whoever it was that mentioned that or spoke about that, that, uh, th- those ordinances would still have to be complied with.
And they still have to go before, uh, so our public safety folks with their final plan.
Right.
Before any layouts are put in place. Just, just as we get ready to prepare for emotions, just a helpful statistic for most folks. Seventeen percent of the population thus far of the sixty and older category has been vaccinated in Putnam County. So I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion that we accept this event, event with the necessary precautions that we have talked about.
It's a motion to approve with the enumerated, um, protocols.
Second.
This is second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Jones, any discussion at this point? Roll call. Okay, we're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay. Uh, motion passes four to one. So, good luck.
Good luck, thanks.
Get a roll call vote on that? I'm the only nay. Oh, you're down, I didn't even say. The only nay. So. Good luck, young professionals. And again, thank you guys for always stepping forward. Good luck, young professionals. And again, thank you guys for always stepping forward.
Maybe you all can gather outside this conversation and have dialogue so that we're able to move forward. Thank you.
All right. One last item that we brought forward at this time, um, is the Palacca Housing Authority annual report. Uh, I brought, I wanted to bring this item forward. I had an opportunity to speak both with HUD and also with the Palacca Housing Authority to address the concerns that the commission raised at the last meeting. But we would need to have a motion so that we can continue discussion as an emergency item, to take this as an emergency item.
Motion that we accept this as an emergency item.
Second.
This motion for a second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. And so you have a packet of information, which is basically the same annual report that was given by the, by the Palacca Housing Authority during our last meeting. You look at the last two pages of the report, if you go to the last two pages, one is entitled affidavit. And the other is entitled, um, FL zero five seven PHA twenty-one annual plan presentation, public hearing, meeting minutes. And so the big concern that we had, the major concern we had with Palacca Housing was that they didn't provide sufficient information as related to RAD, RAD, remodel, uh, or any assurances that there, that the RAD program is not going to be put into place within that one-year period. Um, from the standpoint that we had gotten some conflicting information as it pertained to what the housing authority was doing, um, with the information with, with their housing units as they moved forward. And so, uh, in order to satisfy what we had, I talked to Mr. Holmes and asked with that, and also, uh, we spoke with council, but I asked them, would it be sufficient for us to get an affidavit from Dr. Woods attesting to the fact that they would not be doing any redevelopment within the next twelve months, which was the concern of the commission? And we got an affidavit which basically says, I, Dr. Anthony Woods, President, CEO of the Palacca Housing Authority located in the city of Palacca, County of Putnam, Florida, make an oath and say that the Palacca Housing Authority has no immediate plans to raise and or redevelop any of its inventory or construct any outstanding Faircloth units within the next twelve months. And so the Faircloth units are the sixty-two units from Frank George. And the, the language of the raise and remodel comes from RAD. That's the RAD language as well. And so that was a concern that we had because when you, when we look at the annual report, one of the things that we have to determine is, does it comply with our comp plan? And so by them saying that they have, uh, no plan with, within that twelve-month period, says that there's nothing that's going to be, and that's going to affect the comp plan. The other piece of it was, there were some inconsistencies, um, or at least some omissions as it related to the minutes they had, um, from their meeting that was addressed by Commissioner Jones, by me, by also by council and the city manager, um, as to what those inconsistencies were. They had no mention of annual plan. They actually did corrective minutes, um, to show that there were, to, to show that annual plan, that it was an annual plan meeting, uh, and to meet the concerns that we had. We spoke with, uh, both the regional field manager, with the, the field manager out of Jacksonville, Mr. Hayes, who was on the phone with us, as well as Dr. Scott Ford, who was a facilitator, um, for the conversation. They called me and asked about what was in place and also explained to me what HUD's position was formally. And I had, I immediately had a conversation with the city manager upon hearing that. It was after hours. And, um, and so we had him put forth the concerns of the commission and so we brought it back so that we could kind of move forward with this, uh, at this time. Any questions from the commission?
I'm just glad to see this affidavit is done. I did have a meeting with Dr. Woods and their, their attorney. And, um, I, I did have some questions after that, but seeing this affidavit indicating that they're not going to do any, um, make, you know, renovations or anything within the next twelve months. I don't have any issues with moving forward.
Any other concerns? Under Commissioner Jones, your liaison for the, for PHA, you have any concerns? Any, Commissioner Moore, anyone at this time? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve the annual plan of PHA. There's a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. I will execute. At this time, that concludes our agenda for this meeting. If there is nothing pressing, we're going to waive comments until tomorrow. We're going to be back here tomorrow with our workshop. Commissioner Jones is going to lead the workshop. Now, just, they come right now, we're going to have the workshop tomorrow to address the issues, wherever our department heads in here, we'll move forward at that time. Is there anything else that we need before the commission at this time? Commissioner Moore, got anything? Anyone else? Anything pressing that we need to address from staff, from the city manager? We have one of our officers was recently injured in an auto accident. He's good. So we're going to make sure we continually send our prayers out for him and everyone who was involved in that accident. If there's nothing else, we will stand adjourned.